Yeah, that sounds like a theory.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if I could have a mic to work with.
Hey, my friend, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm still sucking air.
Hey, I'm sorry to hear about your mother.
She's 106, and she's been dead ridden for the last five months, and so I'm sorry about it. Thank you for the thought. And I'm only 24. I can talk, I can talk. That work too?
Yeah.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
I don't microphone, I can do everything.
Nice to have you here tonight.
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
You're a bobby, you're a bobby coach?
No, I'm helping out.
Oh, that's good.
Unified watching TV.
Down Williamsboro when they was talking about their kids have the watchy thing.
There's a couple of schools around the district, and I never heard of it.
Me neither, I never heard of watchy D on that. Card game or something?
I'll call the school board meeting, the board, what the board secretary take the role?
Mr. Jim Bard.
Present.
Mr. Dwayne Bird.
Dwayne Bird, here.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Here.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Here.
Dr. Nathan Goat.
Here.
Mr. George Sutter.
Here.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Here.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Here.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Present.
Alan Hunt. Mr. Caden Yonish.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the Lord. And to the republic of which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you all for coming, thank you for all those folks that are listening and watching the stream. As we begin our deliberations this evening, let us once again be reminded of our duty to represent all the children of the school community, regardless of age, sex, race, or creed, regardless of need or ability. May we now have a moment of silence to reflect on our thoughts, plans, and actions on behalf of the students of the Shippensburg School District. And a moment of silence for Shirley Orndorf, who passed away January 8th. She's a former custodian at the school district. Kelly Andrew Shetter, passed away January 9th, 1985 graduate of the high school and career tech center. Rose Scott, passed away January 14th. She would have turned 106 years old. She was the mother of board member Fred Scott. Shirley Weller, January 14th, she was a 1963 graduate of Shippensburg School District. And Robert Cordell, January 16th, father and boy Jamie Cordell. Thank you. Dr. Suppo, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. President, we have one change under the superintendent's report. I'd like to remove agenda item 3D. This is why we're not going to be able to join us here this evening.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move, go approve.
Moved by Mr. Suters, is there a second?
Fred Scott's second.
Second by Mr. Scott, roll call.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yeah.
Mr. Dwayne Bird.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goat.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hillbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. We'll move on to citizen comments. Just as a reminder, we have two public comment periods on our agenda. The first public comment period is, first public comment period is for anything listed on the agenda. The second comment period is at the end of the meeting where you may address the board with any other comments that you may have regarding any other item. If you do have a public comment, please come up to the microphone right here on this side. State your name and your address, and the fact that you're a district resident, and the board welcomes your comment. Leah Fleming? Darren, Darren Donovan?
Good evening, Darren Donovan. I am a district resident, 108 McCullough Road. I actually have a concern that a fellow member of the community wanted me to bring up, because they're not able to attend the meeting this evening. It's regarding Section 4J, the contract with Hurley Auctions. I believe, to make it short, they are wanting to know, looks like we are going to auction off some extra supplies and things like that. They're wanting to know the benefits of that versus donating the items and maybe receiving a tax break on that, if that would out, or be a better, better way of going about it. I don't know if you guys had looked into that, or if anybody would want to speak to that, but that was, the concern of that person, I just wanted to bring it up to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Darren, if I could very quickly just answer your question there. Of course, the district does not pay taxes, so there would not be a tax break. But we do have another item later on in the agenda to, in fact, be able to donate those desks to local chairs and, or, excuse me, local churches and schools, if they still have an interest, that we would provide the desk to them first prior to them being auctioned.
Amanda McNair?
Good evening. I'm Amanda McNair, I live on Southwood Drive in Shippensburg. I have three issues I wanted to bring up this evening. The first one is in relation to 4A, the approval of the minutes for the meeting on 110. I was seeking clarification on the health and safety plan, specifically because there was a statement in there about Grisby lures, the masking being mandatory there, regardless of what the other schools did. The approval, the vote that took place was to bring on the health and safety plan in line with the CDC guidelines that were updated. However, that was a guideline with the Shippensburg University, not the CDC guidelines. So I kind of would like some clarification on the actual minutes and what was being approved and what's not being approved. In addition, I believe that it was stated prior to that conversation in that meeting, that we would have the health and safety plan on the agenda tonight, but it's not, and I'm guessing that's because you guys went ahead and voted in that meeting. So it's just looking for some clarification for the community on that point. For 4E, that's the resolution not to raise the taxes above the index. I do want to say I appreciate that, if that's the way you're choosing to go still. I know we didn't have a large attendance last week for the budget meeting, but if anybody was paying attention, anything above that would really hurt a lot of people, so I do appreciate that. What I did want to bring up, I know there's still a deficit, it's significant. I know when I was growing up, my grandparents were highly involved with the community. When the schools needed something, when the children needed something, the community worked together. The schools let us know, let parents and grandparents know what they needed, the rest of the community, and they all kind of banded together. So the question I have for the board, and what you can put out there for the community, is what do you need, what the community can help you with, that you're struggling with? Like, there's some things that the community can help with, that you don't really need to rely on the budget solely. Like, I think humans by nature are giving, they're generous, they're loving, and we're not working together. So I think there's something there we can take a deeper look at. The other piece to that, I know there was like the special education. I know it's way over what it was before, and that some of that came from another bucket. Again, is there other things that we can be doing as a community to help these kids out? It doesn't all have to rely on the classroom. Like, we're all, we're all one, whether it's in school, or at home, or in the community, we're all one. So can we work together a little bit and let each other know what we need? Our kids are more important than what we're going through. My last thing was the athletic stadium. I know tonight's discussion was more between whether we want to have it at the school, or we want to do it with the borough at the same place that it's at now. I didn't make any comments the night that we had the public meeting. I know, I'm not the type of person, I like to hear it all, like, let it sink in, think over it, ponder. And I'm numbers. I have a home budget, I don't like to take out loans, I like to pay things in cash. And my request would be to do it here on the property where it seems like it's less expensive. Scale it down to something manageable. Again, it doesn't seem like we have the money in the budget, so can we work with the community? This is something the community wants, it's been in the works longer than I've lived in this community. I left Pennsylvania and served my country and came back, and it was going on way back then. I think it's time that we figure out how to do things together. So can we figure out how to split, like, cut some of the fat off of the budget, clean it up a bit, and try to work with the community? I do appreciate that, appreciate your time and your service, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Travis Coont?
I'm sorry, Travis, I thought it's okay there, buddy. Okay. Pen might have missed a little bit. What I wanted to talk about was, I guess it would fall under 4A also. It's been brought to my attention that a couple of the board members has asked for this to be on the agenda, about the quarantining versus the number counting procedure, and I haven't seen it on the agenda, maybe I'm missing it. But currently, we have students that are sent home, they're sent home for five days, and on day six, they're allowed to come back to school, and they're considered safe to be around to get for nine more days, counting in total 14. They're still counted as a number. How does this make sense? It is no wonder our numbers are higher than any of the schools around, because we're counting kids that are still safe to be around as being a positive case. It just doesn't make sense. From a few of the numbers that I've looked at, it looks like if we would have counted the five days, and in five days is all even to be positive, that we could have had a few school buildings open this week to go into mass auction. Why do we keep doing the same things, over and over again? We keep mask, 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 they're not working, let's try something different. I mean, I hate to keep beating on the mass subject, but we were told that we would get away from it, and now we just keep going farther into it. While we have other schools that, it's been almost a month that they have been doing it, and a few are having issues, because I've been checking, but most are not. If it's, if the procedures we're using aren't working, let's try something different, instead of beating a dead horse. But on a good note, I did want to bring up, because I know everybody's supposed to be voting on the location of these woods complex tonight. As you know, if you've done any projects, building a house, building a building, renovating a house, that you must first nail down what you want to do, where you want to do it, before you can talk about budget, and trimming budget, and whether you can afford it. So I'm excited to see that there's supposed to be a vote tonight on the location. And I think it's important that we keep here on the school grounds, just because it's taxpayers' money that's going to the schools, so we should have it on the school's ground, I think it's a better location. And we don't have cost basis of interest with other groups on what's done with the property. Thanks.
Thanks, Travis. Move on to reports, Franklin County Career Center report, Mr. Bird?
Thank you very much. The next meeting of the Franklin County Career and Technology Center Joint Operating Committee, which is the operating board for that school, will take place this Thursday, January 27th, at 7:00 PM at the school. The next two items that I want to mention are moves in a, in a direction toward places that we were in the school pre-pandemic. And that is where anchor companies would be, would be looking at working with the school to do incumbent worker training, for example, like CNC operator training, welder training. And those discussions are beginning to, to resume, which is very encouraging. And in that, in that same vein, both Letter Kenny Army Depot and tomorrow, and then Volvo Road Construction on Wednesday, will be, again, touring the facility to look at capabilities, meet with students and so forth. And really, where all this is, is going is, is to, to reengage in cooperative educational opportunities for students and these anchor businesses. For example, co-op students and, and those kinds of things, as well as, as well as specialized training that can be offered in the school, in, in the various programs that are, that are available in the school. So it's really a, a move back to, to working where we were really pre-pandemic with anchor businesses in the, in the community, very exciting. The last thing that I do want to mention briefly, I was asked in a, in a previous meeting with some interest in, in these numbers, I'd indicated I wasn't sure if we would continue, or how much longer we would continue to show the numbers from the Franklin County Career and Technology Center regarding the lost instructional days, or virtual days versus in-person days. But we do have a slide, and I think if you would, if you can put that up, we'll just take a brief look at it. Yes, there, there you go, and just really without elaborating, what you can see is the numbers, January 10th through 14th, resulted in, you look at that next to the last column over there on the right, 553 student days of in-person instruction lost to virtual instruction during that week. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Board committee reports, I'm not sure that any boards have, or committees have met yet. I just did appoint the boards, and recently appointed the chairman, the chair of the board committees.
Mr. President, we have a negotiation committee set up next week, meeting on the 3rd. Of course, that is not going to be public, and then we are also working on developing a date for safety and security meetings. We'll notify the public when we have that date set.
All right, and the board did meet an executive session before this meeting to discuss several contract matters, and I believe some personnel negotiation matters. Superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report, first I would like to begin by acknowledging that January is designated School Director Recognition Month. In honor of the commitment and time, school board directors volunteer on behalf of our schools and communities, January is designated as School Director Recognition Month. The work of these public servants is vital to the success of our students and our schools. From voting on budgets, to adopting policy, to conducting comprehensive planning, school boards make key decisions that drive public education. The work is both complex and diverse. School directors to vote, on average, 10 hours each month to board business, which has only been made more challenging by the pandemic and related issues affecting the well-being of our students and families. That 10 hours came from Pennsylvania School Board Association. I can tell you, as superintendent, our school board members spend more time than that. Board service is unpaid, and school directors are often motivated to pursue the role of, out of a desire to benefit our community. The majority of school directors indicated their primary reason for serving is to give back or contribute to the public education of our students, or improve educational outcomes for them. About 42% of our school directors serve the district they once attended as a student. School directors are located, are locally elected officials, focused on improving the townships and boroughs in which they live. They are our fellow neighbors, local leaders, coworkers, parents, and friends. As citizens and parents, the success of our schools is a collective interest. Set aside some time to show your school directors appreciation for the time and effort they put toward the goal all year long. Their efforts help ensure that each student has opportunities to thrive, and that our public education school system remains a pathway to our students' bright future. So this month, I want to take a moment to recognize our school board directors, and thank them for all of their efforts. Mr. President, under item 3CB, we're reporting the school fund, excuse me, activity fund balance accounts. The state auditors recommend reporting activity fund balances to the board of school directors on a quarterly basis. The following are the balances as of December 31st, 2021. Senior high school, eighty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. Middle school, forty thousand, eight hundred dollars. Intermediate building, six thousand, twenty-two dollars. Jamesburg Elementary School, six thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Nancy Grayson Elementary, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. A detailed listing of the senior high and middle school activity accounts is attached. We also have a donation report this month. We acknowledge, or the school district and board of directors would like to acknowledge, the receipt of donations from the following. We have an anonymous donation, with the proceeds going to the Shippensburg Area Senior High School, FFA plant sale, donation value of ninety dollars. Previously, we had scheduled Mrs. Maury to provide us with a presentation from the intermediate building. She will not be present this evening, so we will reschedule that for, for another month. We also have with us Mr. Yonish, who's going to give us a presentation on, as a, as a board's student representative.
Thank you. So, this Saturday, Jaden Statham set the new school record for the most career points. Congratulations, Jaden. SASU students completed their first semester Thursday, the 13th, and started the second semester last Tuesday. Spring sports science begun this week during flex. SASU held a career speaking day with different representatives from many organizations, and they spoke about their jobs. This included the state police and DCNR, jobs like that, that was in the beginning of December, or the end of December. Students finished up keystone exams for the winter last week. That included algebra keystones, biology keystones, and literature keystones. The FFA members visited the farm show and midwinter convention, where several FFA members received their jackets, and two members earned their keystone degrees. The boys swim team is currently one and five, and the girls team is four and two. The boys basketball team is nine and one, and the girls team is four and five, and the wrestling team is three and six. And I'd also like to say that all these records were either found through max preps online, or I tried to talk to peers, so if they're wrong, please correct them. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Jaden.
Thank you, Jaden. Mr. President, back to you for the consent agenda.
Consent agenda 4A is approval of minutes from January 10th. 4B, the finance reports. 4C, personnel. Administration recommends acceptance of the following resignation for the purposes of retirement. Brian Smith, high school English teacher at the high school. Administration recommends approval of salary adjustments for the following professional staff members. Janelle Carval, Kara Chestnut, Sarah Gerber, Sarah Heppel, Morgan Robinson, Jenna Wellham. Administration recommends approval of the following new appointments. Riley Colbertson, long-term substitute, third grade teacher at Nancy Grayson. Delaney Jean, long-term substitute, first grade teacher at Jamesburg. Support staff, the administration recommends approval of the following termination due to job abandonment. Samantha Stinger, part-time classroom assistant at the intermediate school. Administration recommends approval of the following staff employees who have successfully completed the 60-day probationary period. Rasha Daywood, part-time classroom assistant at Jamesburg. Administration recommends approval of following new appointments. Darian Fine, full-time custodian at the Chambersburg, or Chambersburg, Shippensburg Area Middle School. Administration recommends approval of the following substitute support staff. Ezra Lee, classroom assistant. Administration recommends approval of the following resignation. Matthew Lane, at Middle School, girls head soccer page. Administration recommends approval of the following new appointment. Mallory Kravitz, high school musical, technical production manager. Sharon Lawrence, grad, graduation coordinator. Cole Pearson, high school assistant stage manager and AV coordinator. Michael Peters, high school news channel advisor. Michael Peters, high school news channel advisor. And Luke Reed, high school stage manager. Administration recommends approval of the following ESL, after-school tutoring volunteer appointments. Mary Bender, Sterling Floristall. 4D is the Girl Scouts Academic Edge Program. 4E is the resolution not to raise taxes above the index. 4F is basketball booster club donation in the amount of $2,960 for the event night color rush uniforms. 4G, agreement with KNW engineers. 4H is a request to form an encouragement clause. 4I is a memorandum of understanding between the district and the Boys and Girls Club of Chambersburg and Shippensburg. 4J is a contract with Hurley Auctions. 4K is a contract with Contingency Resource Group. 4L is frontline time and attendance and central software. 4M is a lease agreement with Green Trail Solutions for a postage machine. And 4N is the approval of the local audited financial statements which were reviewed at the Budget Finance Committee meeting last week. Does any member of the board wish to take any of the consent items separately?
Dwayne Burt, I'd like to see us take 4G.
4 what?
Excuse me, 4E, the resolution. 4G, which is the KNW engineering agreement. And 4N, which is the local audited financials report. I believe those items are big enough on their own that they should be pulled out and voted on separately. Thank you.
Any others?
Yes, I'd like to take 4A separately.
4A?
Yeah.
Any others? Is there a motion to approve 4B, C, D, F, H, I, J, K, L, and M?
Fred, Fred Scott, I make a motion, we accept those.
Motion made by Mr. Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sooters, roll call.
Could I ask you a quick question first?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, Dr. Suppo, if you could clarify point K, what this contract with Contingency Resource Group, exactly what it is they do and maybe what our expectations are?
Yes, so if the board will recall, we previously had a contract with Contingency Resource Group. They assisted the school district in applying for federally available funds for reimbursement for expenditures during the pandemic. There's a new round of funds that is available, so we're looking for approval to once again contract with Contingency to help the district and seek funding that is available.
Okay, thank you. Well, let me ask this. I, I, sorry, I didn't look through the contract, but do we pay them even if funds are not acquired?
We do. We would pay them regardless, but I can tell you, if you look at the success we've already had, I would expect that we will certainly exceed, far, far exceed the amount that we pay the Resource Group.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Dwayne Burt.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Sooters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. 4A, is there a motion to approve 4A? So moved. Moved by Dr. Goats, is there a second?
Fred Scott, second.
Second by Mr. Scott, discussion?
I, I wanted to, I, I do want to open up a discussion. I wanted to review some concerns with the minutes of the last meeting during, when specifically regarding the quarantine and the health and safety plan changes during the presentation that Dr. Suppo had showed. He shared that the G Blues mask mandate was an oversight, which is different from what was voted on on December 20th during the special board meeting. A motion was made from the floor as stated in the minutes. The administration recommends the updates to the health and safety plan to align with the updated CDC recommendations. That's exactly what we voted on. We did not vote to change any masking. And again, I, that motion typically, when a motion is made and then it is seconded, the board president reiterates the motion that was from the floor. So I'm asking that the vote that was made on January 10th be recalled and redone.
Did we look at the actual wording in the minutes?
Yes.
Did the administration look at the?
I, the wording in the minutes, and from my perspective, were not a word-for-word review of the meeting itself, but a generalization. When the motion was made, and I know that came into question the week, the week after the meeting, I know that, but Mr. Sooters had made the motion. I checked with him, asking him if his intent in the motion was indeed the entire document that we had presented. He confirmed that, and so that was where the district continued forward.
I guess my question is, is the agenda item referenced CDC guidelines, correct? If I recall the agenda properly, I, in other words, when you looked at the agenda item, we were changing the health and safety plans to adhere to new CDC guidelines, correct?
I would, I would have to look. I believe it said health and safety plan first. I'm not, I'd have to go back, Mr. Butterball, to, to the computer box, excuse me, to see what would, what was listed underneath of that. But I know that, I know the main title heading was health and safety plan.
Are you looking at it up, Christie?
Yeah.
So under the January 10th agenda, it was under the action agenda. It was district's health and safety plan, and it said, "Administration recommends updates to the masking requirements to align with the updated CDC recommendations." And then there's a bullet point, and it says CDC guideline updates. And then there was an attachment that says mask requirement.
So masking requirements in accordance with the CDC guidelines doesn't really have anything to do with Grace Be Lour's Elementary School? Because that's not a, the CDC is not telling us anything about Grace Be Lour's.
I would say this, though, that if you look at the document that was presented that night by the superintendent, at the very top of it, it, it spells out what's in question here, which is the exclusion of Grace Be Lour's to, to the, to the, to the masking requirements of the school district. And the superintendent did verbally spell that out and make it clear. And if you go back and look at the YouTube video of the meeting, you'll see that, too.
When the presentation was presented, it, the addition that G, Grace Be Lour's would be exempt from the masking was placed in the middle of the presentation, and a vote was not even on the action agenda. A motion came from the floor, and that motion specifically worded, if you watch the YouTube video, states updated CDC recommendations not with the intent of the superintendent's
I believe it was actually a motion to, to approve the revised health and safety
Have any other board members not realized that they were voting on a Grace Be Lour's change in the rest of the district's mask policy?
So, Mark, if I could, I was not here for that meeting, so I obviously did not vote. But I guess my question is, what, when exactly, because I was never aware of this before, was anything with Grace Be Lour's to be excluded from everything else in the district's health and safety plan? I just, I don't know. And I just look at, if a child were to apply for a mask exemption at Grace Be Lour's, to my understanding, our superintendent would side that, even though it's on district, university property. So I, I just would like some clarification on how we're coming to these decisions, because I'm, I'm just, I'm confused.
Dr. Suppo, can you share when, when that communication did happen? Because we voted on December 20th, and that G, Grace Be Lour's was listed on all of the schools in the district, not all schools except, and that is what was voted on. So I think that there needs to be a procedure to remedy that initial, whether it was miscommunication or, I don't know what it was, but to remedy, remedy that.
Well, as I, as I pointed out during the presentation, that was an oversight, that there was a difference between the school district's policy to move to masking is optional in compared to, as compared to the, to the university's policy where everyone is required to wear a mask on university property. So that's, that's, as I stated during the meeting, that's where that came from. You know, I, as far as, as far as the question about students who would have a mask exemption, students certainly can in any building, apply for a mask exemption and have that approved with proper documentation. That doesn't necessarily get approved by the superintendent, but it comes through the right channels, depending on the student's disabilities or health conditions, that that would be reviewed by the administration and approved. So that can occur. I, I don't know. I'm assuming that also similarly can occur at the university level, that there may be exemptions. So I, I can't speak to whether or not there's a discrepancy there, but we felt that being on the university campus, while yes, it is a district school, it is on university grounds. It is on university property. So that's where that came from.
But was there anybody at the university that advised that we have to do that? Because it's not their school.
No, nobody said that we had to do that. I was asked by the university. The, the Department of Education chairperson had contacted me to point out the discrepancy between the dis, the new district policy and the university's policy. And I do not believe that I, I did not indicate, let me back up. I did not indicate at the meeting that the university told us we had to do that. I said there was a discrepancy, and my recommendation would be that the school would follow the
Well, I think that there, I think that there's confusion among the board, whether they knew or not that the G Blues mask mandate was involved in that motion. There was also substantial confusion in the community, especially with the G Blues parents, of whether that was, whether that was actually part of the motion or not. So I think what we need to do is, we have already, in the Jan, in the January 10th board meeting, we have already passed the health and safety plan revisions in accordance with the CD, new CDC guidelines. But I, I think that the board needs to have a separate vote on the G Blues issue, because it was not clear to all board members that that was included in the motion.
That, that would be up to the board. I cannot make the motion.
What about getting the opinion of the university? I mean.
It, I mean, you can get the opinion of the university all you want, Charlie. I mean, I, that's fine. It's not their school.
Well, it, it's on their property.
I don't care if it's on their property, it's not their school.
They are our students. They are still our students.
Dwayne Burt, well, let me, let me say this. The, the, the exact resolution that we're looking for here, I'm, I'm unclear about, because it's, it's very clear to me, and you can go back and, and you can go back and look at the YouTube video, but the, the exclusion of Grace Be Lour's for masking was in the presentation. It was spelled out verbally by the superintendent. I don't really know how that could have been made any more clear. And the, the motion was to accept the changes to the health and safety plan as presented. Now, if you want to revote or whatever you want to do to resolve that, that's, that's sort of, that's sort of one thing, but it, it doesn't really make sense to me. It seems like we've already covered that ground. The, the second thing, and much more important, is that we have a long-term partnership with Shippensburg University as it relates to the operation of the, what was, what used to be Roland, what is now the Grace Be Lour's Elementary School. And, and as such, we, we really need to, to tread lightly here, in my opinion, as it relates to, certainly, certainly the operation of the school is, is done so through the Pennsylvania Department of Health, through our superintendent, Dr. Chris Suppo, who, and that's the only way that the school can, can operate. It is through the school district, and that's, that's a very critical part of, of the part of what, the part of the partnership that we bring to the table, as well as we fund, we fund a kind of a lease payment to them, which is, which is relatively a small lease payment, and we fund, maybe you want to say about half of the positions. Maybe it's a little less than half of the positions. And, and then what the university brings to the table is certainly the Department of Education and, and students that are, that are a part of the school to, to, to learn and to facilitate and to help, the, the laboratory environment that the school brings. But they, they bring, they bring, in addition to that, they bring the building. And without that part of the partnership, this is a financially very, very important and critical issue for the, for the school district. And they bring the building. And if they didn't bring the building or whatever, we'd have to, we'd have to float a bond, and we'd have to, you know, we'd need to add, you know, probably to some of our elementary schools for the space for, and, and they, they fund, they fund half the teachers over there that aren't in our budget and so forth. So before we, but before we get, before we get, even think about getting out of sorts on this, on this topic, the, the partnership that exists between Shippensburg University and Shippensburg Area School District and the operated, operation of that school is, is very precious to us all, and it is certainly in our best interest, including our best financial interest, to, to, to handle this situation in a very careful and appropriate manner. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to.
Please stop. This isn't public comment. Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion for my motion that I did on the 10th to be the same as what Dr. Suppo presented to us, which included Grace Be Lour's going with the university's rules.
Mr., Mr. Sooters' motions to.
What happened to motion on the floor to, what happened to motion on the floor to just approve the minutes? Is that, are we wiping that out now?
Well, it's. Well, it's, the problem is, is there's confusion about what the minutes actually state.
I just clarified what I made the motion for on the town.
I think, I think the appropriate way to handle it is, for transparency purposes, to have a separate motion on G-Blues, but the minutes are what they are, and they're recorded as they are, so we need to vote on the approval of the minutes first. So, there is, there is a motion to approve the minutes by Dr. Goats, and a second by Mr. Scott. Is there any other discussion on the actual approval of the minutes themselves?
You say, I just clarified, are you saying something is wrong with the minutes, or perceived wrong with the minutes, or just...
No, I think that there was confusion whether the health and safety plan vote was just adopting new CDC guidelines, or whether the motion was adopting CDC guidelines and the mask changes at G-Blues.
Okay.
And since there's confusion on that, I think for transparency purposes, you just put a separate vote up, but we still got to approve the minutes. The minutes are what they are. Any more questions on the approval of the minutes? Roll call?
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yeah.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. And Mr. Suter, if I understand your motion correctly, you are clarifying that G-Blues, that the administration's recommendation on Grace Be Lors Elementary School to operate its mask requirement in accordance with university policies, is that accurate?
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm sorry, but are you also including the changed CDC recommendations that we adopt that, so that the five-day, whatever, I can't even remember what it's called now? It seemed to me, Charlie, that you were...
The whole thing.
Yeah, yeah, so, so you're wanting to...
So, you're, you're just revoting, but you're clarifying the Grace Be Lors policy. Is that accurate?
Correct.
So, you're revoting the original, what is in there, and you're clarifying that Grace Be Lors, your, your motion is including the administrative recommendation to follow the university's masking policy?
Correct.
Okay.
So, then a no vote would have us revert back to the old quarantine policy?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hilbinger, further discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
No.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
No.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
No.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, what's the next one that's separate here? The next one that is separate is for E, resolution to not raise taxes above the index versus preliminary budget. And this is a, we had to take this separate anyhow, Mr. Burke, because there's two options there, and the board needs to pick one. So, thank you.
There's a attached resolution, Mr. President, if you want to read that.
You want me to read this? The whole thing?
You don't have to, I'm just pointing out that what we're voting on is this resolution.
And this is the resolution that is effectively not to exceed the Act One Index?
The resolution is for the board of directors to not exceed the Act One Index and apply to the state in excess of 4.5.
And is that the administration's recommendation?
It is.
So, it's number one?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve four E, as recommended by the administration to adopt a budget resolution not to exceed the Act One Index?
Dwayne Burke, so moved.
Moved by Mr. Burke, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Suter's, discussion? Roll call?
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. Four E is the agreement with K&amp;W Engineers, is there a motion to approve four G?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Suter's, is there a second?
Fred Scott seconds.
Second by Mr. Scott, discussion?
Just a couple of comments. I understand that this will include surveying and so forth at the high school, and yet we're really not far enough along with feasibility study to, to have made any dent in determining what we're going to do at the high school, a little bit like having the cart before the horse, however. I understand that there's economy of scale in moving on to, in doing the high school, at the same time, the middle school work is done. I understand the likelihood of doing work at the high school out of the long list of needs that have been identified there. And however, I also understand that there were some serious questions about some of the proposed traffic patterns and routing and so forth in the middle school, high school plan. So, I would ask that, that both the facilities committee and athletics committee perhaps look at that as they continue their work in the project effort, and other than that, that's all the comments I have.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yeah.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. And the final separate is for N, the local audited financial statements. These, presentation by Tina Geip was made at the, last week at the Budget Finance Committee. She did a terrific job going through the rather thick audit. Is there a motion to approve four N? Moved by Mr. Suter's, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Goats, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yeah.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. We'll now move on to the action agenda, these items are all taken separately. Sun, five A is the Sunday use of facilities. It is a request to hold a paint activity fundraiser for SAIS families on Sunday, January 30th. When the building is, when any building is being requested to be used on Sunday, it must be in accordance with Board Policy 707. Is there a motion to approve five A?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Bard, is there a second?
Fred Scott seconds.
Second by Mr. Scott, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. Five B is the transportation contract between Heck Myers and the school district, is there a motion to approve five B?
Fred Scott make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bard, discussion?
Yeah, what is this about? Boil's getting out business?
Thanks for asking, Mr. Scott. Boil Transportation is still our primary bus contractor, as we talked about the last time when we were here, the, how difficult it is to find drivers, and so this is sort of a backup for us, to sort of help relieve a little bit of pressure, taking over at least a couple of routes with their buses, and then that way they'll provide us with a little bit of space, or spare, a couple of spares possibly, with Boil Transportation. We also have problems with our charters, which are mostly in the evenings for athletics, students who are traveling to other schools, and they're helping us out in a way to fulfill our mission.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call?
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. Five C is approval of bus drivers, the administration's recommending approval of the following bus drivers with Heck Myers. Is there a motion to approve five C?
Fred Scott make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Everly? Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yeah.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. Five D is approval of Boil Transportation van driver, Brianna Williamson, is there a motion to approve five D?
Fred Scott make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bard, discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yeah.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. Five E, permission to donate school desks and chairs, is there a motion to approve five E?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Suter's, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Goats, discussion?
Does Hurley Auction, are they confident that they're going to be able to sell all 2,000 of the desks, or how many are they hoping, to have an idea of how many are available to donate?
Yeah, I, well, what our intent is, we'll donate first, and then whatever's left over, we'll treasure auction. And hopefully, they'll be, whatever's left over, they'll be able to give.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call?
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yeah.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. Five F is Pasbo Services Contract, Joseph Walker, is there a motion to approve five F?
Fred Scott make a motion.
Moved by Mr. Suter's, is there a second?
Second by Mr.
Second by Mr. Scott, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yeah.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suter.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. Five G is a request from Shippensburg Wrestling Booster Club to use security company, is there a motion to approve five G?
Excuse me, excuse me, before we make a motion on this, on this issue...
Are you addressing five G?
Five G.
Okay, there's got to be a motion first, and then discussion.
All right.
Is there a motion to approve five D?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Suter's, is there a second?
Fred Scott seconds.
Second by Mr. Scott, discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion. Why are we putting ourselves in a liability position? If we approve this security company, and something goes wrong, we become part of the organization that has the facility, correct? So, why are we even care, why are we involved in who they hire?
So, in the past, Mr. Scott, all of the, many, many outside organizations has used firms that we've already had approved here in the school district. This was a, this was a request, because they could basically do it cheaper than who the district was currently using. I was in communication with these individuals, because my, my primary goal was that we could contract with them through the school district, not just for this one special event, but for others.
Through wrestling, if it's a wrestling club, I don't, I don't care what, who it was, but I'm just saying, why are we getting involved who they hire? Because we went and gave them the building, and now we're saying we approve of the security they use.
We already would be liable.
They have to provide, they do, will provide us, they would have to provide us with liability insurance, we could remain on their liability insurance.
The company, I mean, so, if someone, if they took action, and someone was injured, we could be sued, just like the organization had the vent, because we approved the security? Mr. Bootleg Ball, am I right?
Likely be sued anyhow, because it's taking place on district property.
But, but I understand it, but if we say the security, we're renting a building, I just, I just do the years, I know hiring security is not always the most qualified or trained person that does this, and so my concern is, why, do we, can we function without doing that?
Well, what we could do is require them to use the firm we already have, if that's what you're asking.
No, no, I'm requiring, I want to know, because the firm, do we do any checking on the firm we use?
They have to provide their liability insurance and clearances.
So, but the people they use, we don't know who they are. That's, that's my concern. I don't, people that they use, we don't know what they are, who they are, what they've done. I don't, I'm just not comfortable with that aspect of the people that they use for the security. Company has to hire people to do the job, and I'm just, I'm just wondering, why do we have to even get involved in that, that aspect of, if we rent a rental building, make it seventy, if you have 75 people, you have to have security, you have 100 people, you have to have two securitys. Then the ownership's on them. Why do we, because when we pick, and we say approve this, we're saying we approve of that security service, and if something happens, I just think we're more liable than we need to be.
But my intent on having board purpose is to ensure that we do have liability, they do have liability insurance, that we are named on that insurance, that we do receive clearances for the individuals that they would have. And the reason for that is because as an outside event, they're having, while it's, while it's another organization, they're having students, minors, here in our building, and so in my, in my mind, we would want to make sure that at least as a minimum, those folks had appropriate clearances, as opposed to if we didn't have our hands in it at all, like you said, they could bring in anyone, and we would have nothing to know or show for who they would bring in.
Who provides the insurance, the PSB, or PB, or does, or PB insurance, that they have liable insurance?
Well, they, they both have to have liability insurance. The Boosters Club has to have insurance to use the...
Use the facility.
But the, the firm also has insurance.
Okay, so, and I guess, any insurance, so we need security has insurance, as long they provide it, that's what we're looking for, correct? As long as they have, the security company has insurance, that's what we're looking
And clearances.
And clearances.
And clearances. So, I'm just trying to figure out why it's necessary that we have to approve a specific security. As they, they provide the insurance, they provide the clearances, that's the, whoever rents a building, that's their responsibility. They rented to you. That's fulfill the obligation. But, if we say, we're approving this company to do this, I think this put liability on, more liability on us than necessary.
I, I am not a lawyer, Mr. Scott, I, I know, I, I would, maybe, you can't get the legal advice at present, but. My, my, my thought is that the more effort we put forth to ensure that it is a reputable firm, that they do have liability insurances, that they do, their employees do have plans. To me, that puts us at least in a better position than just saying, hey, you know what? Don't worry about it. You're gonna use our facility, get whoever you want, and they hire a couple of bats who on the weekend-
But, but if-
I'll act as-
But if they provide, if the people say, okay, we have a company, maybe not the one you want, maybe not the one I want, maybe not anybody else, but they profit, they fit the criteria. They got the insurance and they have the clearances. Why are we picking a company?
You're asking why are we approving the P?
Or anybody, or anybody. If they, if any, if I'm just saying-
Generally, generally, we like to, if. Our preference would be that everyone would use the same company that we use. And the reason for that is because they at least know what our expectations are, in addition to the liability insurance, in addition to the clearances. They know, because remember, we're not here on the weekends, so when somebody's renting that facility, we're expecting it's gonna be handed back to us in the same way that it was delivered. And so, that's, that's another part to it. So, the, the truth is, we would prefer that it really be the same company. Again, we were asked to, can we use somebody different? It's, it's a much better cost. My understanding is there's a relationship, they, they know each other, so they're sort of doing them a favor. Hey, great, but let's at least go about this the right way, make sure the district is handling liability insurance, make sure-
I had no problem with that. I, I totally understand. I'm just, for me, there's so many security companies out there that I have been involved with and seen over the years. I'm just not, I just, I'm just uncomfortable picking and choosing which one. I guess that's my, my concern. If they get the liability and what's other stuff he said. I, I, I'd rather prefer on them, but that's my feeling.
One option would, would be to consider going back to the person that made the motion and second and consider tabling this for a, for an opinion from the solicitor, or just vote it down.
The problem, the problem with tabling it is the, it appears to be, one of the events is February fifth and we don't have a board meeting again until. February fourteenth. So, I, I think Mr. Burke's right. I think you either vote for this or you vote it down, and if you vote it down, then I assume the Booster Club has to use who the district uses for everything.
But Doc, didn't you say you were having trouble getting security? For our events?
We had, the firm we've been using has, has been responsible, now, truth matters, I haven't, nobody's asking about this date because it's been assumed that this other company could do it. So, are they available? I think so.
So, is, is this company here to hire company or not? Okay.
No, that's why we're being asked to approve it, 'cause it's not.
So, we're voting on it?
If, if the board, if the board wants to. You could vote on it tonight. I could get clarification from the solicitor. And if that clarification leans in a different direction and he says, yes, Mr. Scott is right, you don't wanna get involved with that, then. We, we would simply. So, motion is contingent upon the solicitor's approval or recommendation or something like that?
Let me ask another question. Would it be your intent moving forward that you would both use the existing security company and this security company interchangeably for all the other things we do?
That was my intent because it's, it's, in today's day and age, when there are so many events and it's hard to get people, it would be good to have options. However, after communicating with these folks, they're busy enough, they really don't want to work from us, they're only doing this as a favor for the Booster Club. So, we would not, in all likelihood, ever use them.
But you did check them out and you, you approved them through your process.
I, I did communicate with them. They seem like a reputable firm, but beyond that. Again, it was, it was, it was really, it was really a matter of they just had too much work for their staff already, and so they weren't interested in picking up additional events here in the school district.
That's what one of my concerns is talking to you, that you were concerned about getting security for our events. You had to, you had to wheel and deal constantly. So. Pitching hole there, to pitch and hold them people, I mean, businesses at small amount is my, one of my concerns. Instead of broadening out and let them find somebody to come to, they just got all the recommendations, all the paperwork. Let's take care of it.
Well, also to clarify, is, is the motion to, to clear them for future work or to clear them for these two dates, February fifth and February twentieth?
These, these two dates, husband?
Yeah, that's the way the motion is written.
So, it's not an open-ended deal anyway?
Can we put in there on the contingency of, you know, our approval from the solicitor or no? And then vote on it tonight and then it just be a matter of a phone call, let him check that out?
What are we actually checking? I mean, either way, you're gonna have security. So, what are we actually checking?
I think the question is whether or not the district puts themselves in a position of greater liability if they approve this motion.
I don't think you are. I think, I think you're taking on lesser liability because you're ensuring that these people have insurance and you're ensuring that they have the proper clearances. Where if you let a company, if you let a club come in here and you don't check on that stuff and they don't, then what does that say about the district?
I don't think the question was not check on them. I'm just saying one specific company, that any company has the same criteria that the other company is, and they hire them and they show the paperwork to the superintendent or his administration, why can't they be considered? Instead of pitching hole one group or two groups doing everything he said the workers, they don't have enough work anyway, that could, that could affect an event. If you're saying that they gotta use them and they can't get them, then what?
I think I understand what you're saying, Fred, and, and I don't disagree with you. In terms of not pigeonholing into one security company, but this motion is for the Wrestling Booster Club and this motion is for the use of the facility on February fifth and February twenty specifically. Not addressing the district's policy in total, but just this.
But is this, is this the, so P, P two is not the board, what your board uses, school board uses all the time? This is a totally new?
This is a different security company than who the district easily uses because of the Wrestling Booster Club getting a better deal.
Okay, alright.
So, the motion remains as it's written. I, I don't think that Mr. Sooters, are you amending your motion at all or no? Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Stephanie Everly. Yes. Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Sooters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Kristy. Move on to the discussion agenda. Six A and six B will be on every agenda from here on for the next, how many? Years because of things that may be needed to vote on. Six A is the athletic stadium. Any discussion on the athletic stadium this evening?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do. I thought we were gonna have that on the action agenda to vote, bring that to the, what we were gonna, whether we're gonna go down to Memorial Park or, or at the school district.
Well, I mean-
I asked the last meeting about that.
Correct.
And you said you were gonna put it on.
Yeah, I thought it was going to be on. I mean, you made your intent clear, if you're gonna make a motion, you can make a motion.
Well, before we do that. I see that the, everybody got the letter from the university. I see that gentleman's back there. I'd like to hear more of his proposal. If we could.
Okay.
Not to put you on the spot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the members of the board for inviting me up to talk a little bit about this. Before I do, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity and with regard to the masking in G Blues, let me please express that. The university remains open to re-engaging in discussion about the health and safety plan of the institution and working with the school district on this and other collaborative efforts to ensure the health and safety of all of our students.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me who you are?
I'm Charles Patterson. I'm the university president.
Okay.
With regard to the facilities, I am rather new in my role as the interim president of Shippensburg University. But I'm reminded that over the years, there has been discussions of collaborative opportunities for sharing of university facilities. And I think that type of partnership should be looked at. To ensure that we can or cannot meet the needs if there, if a need should arise of sharing the facilities. And so, to this end, I did forward to superintendent, a short list of venues and complexes that the university owns, maintains, and continues to improve upon that serve Shippensburg University students. But I'm certainly open to, again, collaboration to meet the needs of a larger community because university, community engagement and that of university and school district engagement is of utmost importance to our communities to make them stronger. So, I'd be glad to entertain any questions that the board has. And what I had put before the superintendent and the superintendent's put before you is really just an offer to come to the table and let's have discussion of, of an internal feasibility study that could really obviously be conducted by our own staff and those athletic professionals that are on staff. To determine what the need is and how the university might support that need, whether it's temporary or long-term.
You ask, you take questions?
Thank, thank you, Dr. Patterson. We appreciate you being here this evening. Board members, any questions?
I got, I got some. Excuse me, Doc. I know you're the acting president, correct?
Fred, can you move the microphone over towards you there or, or hold it up?
It makes too much noise. Okay.
You, what about the one, what about the microphone there and use that one?
That working? I'll, I'll just hold this here. Yeah, okay, I'll talk, I'll talk. You're an acting president, correct?
I am the interim president.
Interim president. So. Are we looking fifty-year agreement? Thirty-year agreement or two-year opt?
Well, once you define what the need is and the ability of the institution to support that need based on availability of use and scheduling, I think those are the key things that you have to figure out first. Once we can determine that, and that shouldn't be determined by the president, you don't want the president telling you how and when to use facilities, that is determined by the users of the facilities. Once we determine that, I think we can look and see and define what the scope of the needs are.
I don't, for us, the needs haven't changed from when we had the discussion ten years ago?
Right. I wasn't here ten years-
I know, I know you weren't here, but I'm just saying, the, the needs was the use of a stadium, the use of field hockey, the use of soccer, and some other things. And we discussed them. We were proposals, but nothing ever came of it because the university needs are, are first. And without lights, it didn't leave us too many options. That, that's number one. Just, I, I know about football. Like football, your goalposts that you use up there at your football stadium, correct? They are larger than what high school requirements, or would, would you be conducive to shrinking your goalposts down for high school usage?
I couldn't comment on the size of the goalposts, but if it's a need for smaller goalposts, I'm sure there's accommodations that can be made to the goalposts that are there to accommodate high school goalposts.
And the field markings for college is different than high school. Who, who would, would you be willing to let us put markings on our field for our high school?
Again, I think it's part of the discussion that should be had.
We've, we've had this, that's what I'm saying. We've had to discuss, not, no offense to you, but this, this merry-go-round keeps going around and it's got to stop sometime. And I understand what you're saying.
I, I can't, I can't really comment on where the administration fell short of fulfilling the needs of Shippensburg Area School District in the past. I can just tell you that. Having come from institutions and served at institutions in a lead role to ensure that the school district and the university are partnering together for the benefit of the whole is my direction. And, and I would love for our groups and our teams to come together and have that discussion. It need not be a long discussion. It need not be an in-depth, externally consulted arrangement. Again, what I'm asking for is, if, if there is a need and there's a need by the board to further discussion of the feasibility of this, then let's have that discussion.
Dr. Patterson, thank you very much for, for your time and for coming this evening. I have the, the benefit of looking at several slides that, that you guys put together and, and gave to our superintendent, but our, but our folks in the audience, it occurs to me, they don't have the benefit of, of this. And I don't know if we happen to, to have those few slides tonight on the computer or whatever, but I think it would certainly be beneficial for the, for the people at home and for the audience to, to be able to look at what I'm looking at.
And I can shoot, and I can shoot those to you right here off this tablet in front of me if you wanna give me the email address to the technician.
I can, I can actually take care of that here.
Okay.
And if we have some other questions from the board, I'll just take a moment.
Well, lights, lights were mentioned. Could, could you, could you speak to, to that a little bit?
Sure. There are deficiencies in some of the fields with, with respect to the lights. That would include, I believe, the football stadium, Seth Grove Stadium. There has been discussions over the years of needing lights on that surface. As far as the other fields are concerned, Fairfield, Fairchild Field, which is our baseball facility, is also without lights. The Rob Sports Complex, which does house field hockey, women's lacrosse, softball, men's and women's soccer, and tennis, does have lights. So, that is a, a future facility need for the university. It has been for some time. We've had ongoing discussions about the corporate partnerships and fundraising that's needed for that. That would be part of a future capital campaign for the university.
So, if I understood you right, you would say that perhaps through the foundation or whatever, that the university could take the, the, the lead in, in raising the money to put lights at Seth Grove, which would allow us to, perhaps to play there on Friday night?
That is a possibility. I'm committing that role to the foundation, but yes, sir, that is a possibility.
So, Nathan Goats, thanks for being here also. Really appreciate it. I, I guess I'm wondering how you might envision the discussion going forward, right? So, clearly, I, I think you need from us a, I mean, if we were to have a discussion, we would need to, to come with, with a sort of detailed list of our needs. And, and then I, I suppose the various stakeholders, I mean, as you said, like you, you know, you don't wanna speak for your various departments or the folks who sort of manage these facilities. So, I, I'm just sort of curious, I mean, could you maybe outline how you would envision that process working and, and to determine if, if we could create some sort of mutually beneficial arrangement or, or whatever?
Yeah, I think, I think from our, from the university's side, I would engage my athletic director, assistant athletic director, and the professional staff to come to the table and talk about the defined facility needs that you've described. Whether that's all sports or a handful of sports, bringing those professionals to the table, talk about scheduling, talk about limitations, talk about the differences between high school and university athletics to be able to accommodate those shared use is of the utmost importance, and that's where I would start.
Yeah. And then, I, I guess, I mean, I, I know this is really hard to talk about, but of course, one of the concerns for us obviously is financial. And I recognize that there's some benefit to the university to have, you know, a lot of potential college students visiting it. Which sounds great, but I, I, I'm also wondering sort of, you know, like. Is there any kind of, I mean, what, what sort of finance, I mean, I don't know. Is this something that you're saying like, hey, we're gonna have to work out what the financial arrangement would be? Or are you prepared to say that you would expect it to be sort of, a, a sort of minimal kind of, you know, financial commitment from the district? Or do you have like a ballpark of like, like if you lease Seth Grove Stadium to some other organization, like what that looks like so that we would have some sense? Or do you, or would you want to say that this all needs to be part of that conversation once the district brings its needs?
Yeah, respectfully, Dr. Goats, I think it has to be part of that conversation. And, and I'm not suggesting to the board at all that you, this is a solution to your needs, right? What I'm suggesting is, is it may not be possible to get everything out of what has been proposed with limits on funding, with limits on availability of funds, whatever it may be. And there may be a need to say, we can do this much with the facility and the bonds that the district is able to develop. But it falls short of providing a field for soccer or field hockey or football. This is not the solution. It is part of- This is not a big solution, it is part of a solution.
Yeah. Well, clearly, if the board decides to go this direction, we're going to have to have more of a conversation and, and, and bring those needs to you. But I, I just want to say, I really, really appreciate you, you being here and making this offer. I think it sends a powerful signal to, you know, the, the district and the community about the university's willingness to, you know, to be a cooperative player in, you know, satisfying the, the interests of the, of the community. And I, I really appreciate that, whether we're able to work something out or not.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I, I have a couple of things if you have one more moment, Dr. Patterson. Levi Kressler. First of all, again, as everyone else has said, thanks for being here. I also took note, I believe, that I saw you here at the K and W presentation in December. I could be wrong, but I think this is something that you have looked at prior to just, you know, coming tonight, so I appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions, though. In terms of, if, if we were to go down that route and play athletic events there, how do we go into terms of staffing the events, like the ticket booths or concessions? Is that something that the university provides? Who pays for that then? And again, this is just big picture because I know in the past I've been told, and I'm, I wasn't a part of these conversations in the past, that union rates come into play and all those kinds of things. And I, I don't know, but I just think that that would be something we would have to figure out. I guess another one that I do have, and, and when you started tonight, you mentioned that you, as a representative of the university, were willing to continue talking about health and safety plans and all those things with grace be lords. That's great. But I, I think if I go back to the fall of 2020, the P S Act did not play fall sports or football to my, to the best of my understanding, where the P I double A did. So if that, and again, I hope that we never go back that far into COVID. But if we were in this agreement two years ago, would our high school kids have had a facility to play at if we were in that agreement if the university had ruled that they weren't going to allow sports or, not the university, but the P S Act? So that would be a concern for me again, because if we would do that and say, and we hope that it never happens to that rate again, do we get pinned in a spot then with the school district with our kids that we can't play?
Yeah, I mean, what's it going to look like two, three years from now, right? But when that decision was made not to play fall sports, it was made by the board of Pennsylvania State Athletic Conference or the P S Act, for which I am a member of that board and a voting member, and voted to, to do that. That was not a fix for all divisions, and it was something that the board agreed upon that does not have an impact on your other sports here.
Okay. And then I guess one other thing, I, I want to-
Not being prohibited from playing in those fields, especially with outside.
And I guess one other thing, and this isn't necessarily to you, but I, I think everybody in the community sometimes gets lost in talking about the athletic stadium, and everybody automatically just assumes football. And I'm as big of a sports fan as anybody, but I look at the potential of sports facilities or athletic facilities, I call them multipurpose, because I look at the benefit in the big picture of what we could do with our phys ed, phys ed classes here where every single kid could benefit. And I do think that there's, there obviously would be restrictions on, we can't take our gym class at 10:20 in the morning to the university to use. It would just be, it would create a lot of things that we probably, there just probably isn't an answer to. So I, that's a big concern of mine in the big grand scheme of things. And I don't know, we could probably talk for hours upon hours, and we'd probably never find a solution just because logistically that can't happen. But, but again, I just wanted to say, they're, they're my comments to you, and I, I appreciate you coming again, I appreciate you being here for the K and W presentation, and you've clearly put in some time and effort into that, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Patterson, I'm, in my role as president, I've met with Dr. Setia and Dr. Harpster and Dr. Carter, and I would enjoy the opportunity to meet with you as well to discuss, you know, a broad range of topics beyond just facilities on where the, the district and the university can, you know, cooperate and corroborate. I've said it in the past, and I'll say it again, I think the district and the university's relationship should go beyond just grace be lords elementary school.
Agreed.
I think it's a benefit to the university and certainly to benefit to our students. So I would welcome the opportunity to meet, you know, in your, in your office with you at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate that, and we do enjoy a great relationship, working relationship with superintendent, especially with our education programs, and so we look for that to continue and expand.
Thank you very much.
Doc, I want to say, Doc, I don't, my name is Fred Scott. I don't mean to, I didn't try to, I didn't mean to disrespect you and your position, but I just got a lot of frustration-
I understand.
About where we're at now for these kids. I just, it just needs to change for me. I didn't try, I'm, I'm sorry if I sounded disrespectful, I don't, I appreciate you coming and everything, but I'm just, and I didn't mean to take my frustration out on you, but I'm just tired.
That's okay, that's okay. No apology necessary. Truly, I see great value in the ability to step outside the door of this high school onto a field without transit. I truly do. It's there as an option for discussion and to just, you know, determine whether it's feasible or not. That's okay. But we're there as a collaborating partner and a willing collaborating partner, and I express that sincerely.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Patterson is, in his short time, I just want to commend him. He has been excellent at reaching out to the school district. Truly, tonight is just one example of how he's interested in, in working and collaborating with us, and we appreciate you being here. One final note, did you want to talk through any of the information that you had sent or is it somewhat self-explanatory?
I'd, I'd love to, to ask if, if they would kind of walk us, walk us through the slides because, because what, what I really got from the slides, and not, not that it's the answer to everything, but it may not be the answer to anything, but it's very clear to me that, that we will never, we will never be able to build these kinds of facilities all on our own, all for ourselves. So some sort of, some sort of hybrid approach that might include practice, a practice field here, and we're, we're, we're landlocked here, so land is very precious here. So if, if, maybe it's a, maybe it's a practice field here, maybe we can walk down the street and access the land at Memorial Park, and it's an additional practice field there. And it, it probably a plan that hasn't been put on the table yet. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be glad to walk you through a little bit of that. The facility that you have there, Seth Grove Stadium, hosts our, our football team, but also hosts the P I double A tournaments every year in the summer. The track that you see there is going to go through resurfacing and renovation next year to the tune of about a half a million dollars. So that's a continued investment that we're putting into that facility to ensure that we can continue to host the P I double A tournaments. On the next page, you'll find the Higginson Field House, which is, I'm very proud to say, a very beautiful space. That's again, used for men's and women's basketball, volleyball, wrestling, women's track and field, women's, men and women's soccer, multi-use facility, that, that's a great use there. The Donald N. Miller Pool on the next page is a, is a great facility for competition as well as practices. We do share that space with the community as well currently. Fairchild Field, which is served for baseball, is going through a renovation of replacing the natural grass with artificial turf. That should be finished in, well, supposed to be finished in late January, if we can get the ice off the ground. So that should be completed as well as the next one, which is the Robb's, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the Robb Sports Complex, which also includes softball, and that softball field is going through the same renovation that the baseball field is, moving from natural to artificial turf, again, to be completed sometime in late January to early February. But it also houses other fields that house field hockey, women's lacrosse, men's and women's soccer, and there are tennis courts on that facility as well. So we continue to put investment into the fields, something close to two million dollars for the artificial turf, and again, another half million dollars for resurfacing the track and field surfaces.
Doc, you said something about the swimming pool. You, you, you coincide, you, with the community on the swimming pool?
We do. We open it up for community times, for the community to come out and swim.
You do now?
We do now, I believe. At least we did when I toured it. I said, at least we did when I toured it, yes.
Okay.
And there are times when we do, I'll, I'll have other schools practice on fields that are out there. I've seen them out there.
Thank you, Dr. Patterson.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Patterson.
Any other discussion on the athletic stadium?
Yeah, so now, we're not going to vote on this. Can, can we have this meeting tomorrow so we can get this rolling?
Why can't we vote on it?
No, I want a meeting as soon as possible.
Why? Well, I mean, why can't we vote on it?
Or, yeah, we can make a motion, and I'm, I'm okay with that.
Oh, yeah. Let's get it over.
Well, I, I certainly, I certainly like the idea of us having a conversation about our needs and, and what those needs would look like. I mean, I don't know, as Dwayne put it, I mean, I think he put it well. It's like, maybe there's something that we haven't even looked at, some, some combination or something that isn't something that's been on the table that we've even considered to this point. I mean, the idea of having really terrific practice fields on our own campus, and then maybe going someplace else for competition, that's potentially appealing. I don't know, I, I, I just think that there's a lot of things to consider, and I, and I appreciate the urgency, and I, I certainly, yeah, I mean, let's, let's do something like right away, like, you know, that we've got a, we've got a facilities committee, we've got an academics committee, maybe we, we, we hold a series of meetings and figure out what our needs are and, and how those needs might be, might be met. I, I know that there's not interest in, I mean, I know there's a lot of interest in just sort of moving forward and, and having a direction and going there, and I, and I really appreciate that, but I, I don't know, it, it, all this has to be put in the broader context of all the other physical plant upgrades that we are considering. And when I continually sort of look over the, the, the feasibility study options and how much work needs to be done to our current buildings, it just doesn't, it just doesn't work out. Like, we can't, we can't afford to spend millions on a stadium with this other stuff. I mean, we need to work on our athletic fields, there's no doubt, and I, and I, and I want our athletic fields to be, to be good, but I, we, we've got to, we've got to look at all of these things together.
It's not going to be ours if it's up there.
We, we pay-
Maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's not, you know, maybe it's some combination. Like, I, I get what you're saying. Maybe it's a, maybe it's a holding pattern until we can afford to, to build the thing that we really want. I, I don't know. I, I, I don't want it to, I don't want it to sound like I'm advocating a particular position other than advocating caution and having a complete comprehensive plan of all of the things that we're going to spend money on before we vote on this one piece.
Didn't, Doc, didn't you vote for $10,000 to be spent on that park for, for a study to see what we could do down that park? Didn't you pay $10,000? The college wasn't involved in that. You voted for $10,000 down there. What, now you don't want the park, now you don't want the stadium at all because they're going to cost too much money. What changed between then and now?
So I'm not saying that. What I, I mean, the, I haven't seen a proposal on the table yet that is something that the district can afford.
And I'm, and I know since I've been on this board, when I got on this board, I talked to administration, and I talked to teachers and that. Two, two things, I said, I wanted to do all these things. You know what they told me? Fred, you're never going to do it. Because number one, they're never going to spend the money, and number two, they always going to say, let the next board handle it. I'm not here for that. I'm here for, I got two more years, and dang, now it is time to come to an end for me.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I'm with you. I mean, let's, let's make it happen, but I, I, I don't think, I don't think just, I don't think this, I don't know, I don't think a decision right now, tonight, is, is the right way to go about it.
And I, I, I would agree with you. If present pass boards had done some of the repairs to this school district that should have been done, we wouldn't be sitting here with all these repairs needing to be done. Twenty, some things we have are 20 years old, out of compliance. How did that happen? 10 years out of compliance. How did that happen? Why wasn't money spent to repair those things? Jim, Jim, you went up to, up to middle school, right? When they were outside and a point, had to put the point in the, in the thing, they did point it, right?
Yeah.
What did the maintenance man tell you?
10 years.
He'd been waiting 10 years to get that done. There comes to a point where you got a rubber hits the road, you got to do something. And every time, we got to meet, we got to do this, we got to do, it's time to do something. And these kids have gone, they've got, go to other schools, and they see what they have, and we got 11.2 million dollars in the budget and fund balance. I'm ready for a vote.
Well, let me, let me say this. Boy, isn't, boy, isn't that nice. I, I'm, I'm curious which, which plan you guys are talking about, because I've, I've seen two plans for the high school grounds. The lowest price is six and a half million, and, and I've seen two plans for, for the park, and that's about nine million. Now, there's, there's some real questions I have about some of the, some of the numbers at the park, but, but which, which one of those are you, are you talking about? And, 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 and how are we going to afford it? For those of us that were at the budget meeting, we saw that we're, we're sitting on about a $2.6 million deficit this year, of which about 2.2 million is the increase in debt service. Most all of the budget deficit is the, is the additional debt service that is necessary to borrow this, you know, this, this $49 million that we, that, that we've talked about, you know, possibly borrowing for using on the projects. Now, the problem with that is they gave us, they gave us four tiers of facility needs. This doesn't include the athletics, as you know. A, a tier one, I'll call it 45 million, a 60 million, an 80 million, and a $109 million 20-year lookout on facilities, okay? And maybe we can borrow about 49, but I don't know how we're going to afford it, even the 49 looking, looking at the budget. And on top of that, we need to address the athletic facilities. Now, on top of that, you see, this is complicated. On, on top of that, we're landlocked here at the high school, which I, I think-
Excuse me. When you say landlocked, what do you mean landlocked?
Uh, when I look out there, when I look at the property, and I see, I see the parking lots that are occupied, and I see the space for the building that's occupied, and I see the space for the existing athletic fields that are occupied, I don't see much unclaimed grass. And, and when we look at the 20-year study on the feasibility for the high school, there are significant additional footprint requirements for the expansion of this building that, that I don't believe we've done the work to get our head around yet. In other words, if you look at the, if you look at the free grass that's out there, how many square yards of free grass is it? Call that 100%. And then if we look at the, if we look at the called-for additions to the high school, this one, this one would go here, and it's going to shrink that available grass by this much, and this one goes here. Because there's some, there's some big stuff in, in that feasibility study. There's an expansion of the cafeteria. One option is to, is actually to build a new gym out front. On, on that feasibility study includes 330 parking spaces. You got to put them somewhere. And, and we just don't have a lot of, a lot of, a lot of excess grass here.
But we do have land.
We, we don't have land here.
We don't have any, the front, the front part of the parking building, the, not to this left side, the oversight-
What I'm really, what I'm really saying is, is not, not to, not to say that I'm an expert on this, I'm trying to call attention to things that I think we need the help of the architects and engineers to help, to help us to understand, because we're clearly, here's, here's the thing. If, if we had plenty of land, acres and acres and acres, and we had plenty of money, then... But, but listen, we, we don't. And, and as we, I'm, I'm really concerned about this. I want to know, for example, if we do this, if we made this motion tonight and did this, and I got some more questions for you, but which of the, which of the educational facility projects are you willing to forego in order to, in order to build a $6.5 million stadium? See, what I'm really wondering is, is, is if we, if we do the work, and, and, and I can assure you that I'm, I'm, I'm absolutely- and I can assure you that I'm, I'm absolutely as interested in you, at, at investing in education, both athletic facilities and educational facilities for the, for the twenty-year needs of this district. That's the reason I got involved sixteen years ago. It's the reason I'm sitting here tonight, okay? But, what I really wonder, because money isn't plentiful, and because land isn't plentiful, then we need to look at what other options are there for, for land. And whether we like it or don't like it, or whatever, but we might, could work a sweet deal for, for, for the land that's sitting over here from Memorial Park, almost free, within walking distance. If we had pl-
Free? What, you said a park?
I said, almost free. I, I heard a deal for, I heard a deal for, you know, for something like a ninety-nine-year, a ninety-nine-dollar lease, or whatever. It could be, the work hasn't been done. But we don't have land here. So, what are the, what are the long-term needs for land of the high school, and the building out of, of this feasibility study? And if we got plenty, then check it off and convince me we got plenty. I'm not convinced we, we do, okay? You got plenty of money, but I'm not convinced we do. I don't know how we're gonna deal with this two point six million dollar budget, again, which almost would be wiped out without the additional debt service. Now, we're gonna need to incur some debt, because we need to invest in the future, okay? Here's a, here's a few more things that, I mean, we just sort of, we've blown right over them, but we, we, we got two drawings. This is how I know we haven't done the work to make a decision of this magnitude. We, we got two drawings for the park. Now, I'm not talking anything that relates to the university. I'm just talking about the park a minute. We got two drawings. When I look at them, what I see is, is that those drawings contain two brand-new stadiums. We don't need two brand-new stadiums. We never even wanted two brand-new stadiums. We, we wanted one, I thought. But, but the drawing, what's, what's a part of that nine million dollars? It doesn't make any sense to me at all. There's two stadiums there, that include, each with their own set of restrooms, and each with their own set of concession stands. It, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense at all. So, we mark that off the list, and we never even ask all the right questions. Number two, and I've already mentioned land, what, the, the deal that conceivably could be worked out, out, down there, within walking distance, adjacent to us, includes significant acreage of land. We, we cannot ignore that and be prudent about it. Because whatever solution I think that we come up with for the high school, it has to consider land. Okay, next. When I, when I look at, when I look at parking, remember, there's three hundred and thirty parking spaces in the long-term plan, additional, in the long-term plan for the high school. They call, they call there being four hundred and fifty spaces at the high school, but there's five hundred and fifty parking spaces at the park. But if you bring all the band people and all the football people here on a Friday night, you occupy probably another hundred or hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. That means you only got three hundred and twenty-five parking spaces here, you know, to, for, for your, for your stadium. So, you gotta, so you gotta address more parking. That's, that's, that's the, that's the land problem. Next, when they put the projects together, it looks to me like there's a fifteen percent contingency fee at the park, but only a ten percent contingency fee plugged in at the high school. That's a, that's a difference of about a half a million bucks right there. And why? I don't know, it doesn't really make any sense. Would you really overrun at the park by a fifteen percent, and you'd only overrun at the school by, by ten percent? Difference is half a million bucks. It's one of the reasons the park numbers don't look very good. Next, I think that, that there's, of course, a scoreboard, a scoreboard at the park, but I don't really see any in the, in the stuff at the school unless I missed it. So, that might be another couple of hundred thousand dollars. Hey, maybe I'm wrong. You can, you can help me figure it out. There's an additional three hundred thousand dollars of stormwater management in the plan for the park that doesn't exist at the school. I'm not sure how that makes any sense either. We're kinda sitting right here together. I think we got the same, same level of stormwater problems. Next, and I get this one. Because there's not one stadium over there, there's two stadiums over there in this big fancy drawing we got, that, it requires the, a ball netting to, to be, to be put around the baseball to separate it from the football. That's another six hundred thousand dollars.
The borough asks for that. The borough asks for that.
Well...
The borough asks for that.
I don't think two things will fit over there.
I'm not arguing. I'm telling you, the borough asks for that.
Well, but, but before we walk away, we, we need to answer the rest of these questions, and we need a, and we need a plan to address the, the land needs, and we need to figure out how we're gonna fund the, the six and a half million dollar project over here. You see, what I really believe, and, and I wish I could prove it, I wish I really knew exactly what to do, but what I, what I really do is see more of the challenges and the work that we haven't done yet. Because what I really believe is possible, that we may find, if we do the work, is some sort of hybrid plan would really, would really emerge. That isn't all of this, or all of that, or all of that, but that might look more like, instead of six and a half million dollars, that maybe we, we put a, maybe we put a practice field back here. And, and then maybe we go down the street at the park and we put a practice field down there. We, we do demolition on the, the grandstands, except for the concrete grandstands. The rest of them are unsafe. And then in the, in the, under the grandstands or in the concession area, we renovate for restrooms over there, something like that. Such that instead of pouring six and a half million over here, that I don't think we can afford, and oh, by the way, it has tax implications, okay? It has tax implications. That maybe we put a practice field here, we put a practice field down there and some renovation. Instead of six and a half million of capital investment, maybe we get, maybe we get that down into practice fields to, to something like, you know, two and a half, or maybe three. And then we take the other three and a half million dollars, and we put it towards some of the rest of the needs. We need a million dollars at the intermediate school, we need two million at Nancy Grayson and James Byrd. So, you could do two more schools with the money that, that we just saved in, in that little what-if. And it's just all those kinds of reasons that I'm, that I'm very sure that, that it's premature to, to decide, oh, let's build it over here. Because I don't know, I don't even know how we can afford it. Thank you.
Right now, the park is run by Franklin County and the borough. Franklin County is getting in the process of building their own park. That means Memorial Park is gonna be supported by Shippensburg Borough residents. I am one of them Shippensburg Borough residents. We do not have the money to finance that park if Franklin County pulls out. If you see now, the repairs that need to be done right now over the years have not been done. Borough freely admits that they don't have the money. They needed us to come down to the function, to do the functions that needed. All I can see is, I am never, never gonna vote for a stadium down that park. I'm a resident, and I'm not gonna vote for it, because all I can see is putting a, putting that stadium down there, and everything else goes around, it gets torched, it gets deteriorated, because they can't finance and support it. Everybody talks. I don't see Southampton, Cumberland trying to join in. I don't see Hopewell Township. I don't see Shippensburg Township. I don't see in Southampton, Franklin getting ready to pull out. Who's gonna support that park once we down?
Well, to your, to your point, if, if, if we went down there and did a practice field and whatever, it would, it'd be ours, and it'd be ours to, it'd be ours to upkeep, and it would, it could, it could be used by the community. If you, if you turn, if you turn that logic around, if we walk away from down there, the taxpayers are gonna be on the hook for the six and a half million dollars over here, and they're gonna, and the borough residents are gonna, are gonna be on the hook for, for the, for the deteriorating thing over there, too.
No matter what happens, aren't they gonna be on the hook, the borough residents? No matter what happens, we're gonna be on the hook for that. That's just a case of, but my, I belong to, I'm on the Shippensburg Area School Board. My first preference is to make sure these kids get what they need.
Well, in, in the, in the, in the what-if I laid out, we, we, instead of putting the six and a half million dollars here, we, we could turn that down into two practice fields. We could do the upkeep over there and renovate that place, and, and have a practice field over there, and maybe you'd, maybe you'd spend three million dollars, and you take the other three and a half of capital invest, work with the university where it makes sense. Look at, look at some sort of hybrid plan, and take the other three and a half million dollars that you desperately need in some of the rest of these schools, and, and do the other upgrades. The real question maybe should be, if you do this, show me, show me, item by item, which items you're comfortable not doing in the facilities plan. Thank you.
No matter what in the facility plan, we can't do all the items. We-
Show me, show me which items you're comfortable not doing.
Well, I think, I think that's the point. I think the board is having this discussion tonight because we don't have clarity. We have a forty-eight million dollar project that was proposed, and we have multiple stadium projects that were proposed, and we know we can only borrow at a certain level. And I think the board needs to have another special session just on facilities to decide, okay, if you've got your forty-nine million, and that's all you can borrow, the board then has to narrow the choices down to what actually is included in that forty-nine million. Fred, you brought up a point about what in that forty-nine million dollars can the district do itself? We don't have that answer. We don't have that answer. We need that answer.
I understand.
But i- if you've only got a fifty-dollar bill, and you've got seventy-five dollars in product, you gotta cut twenty-five dollars.
Let's go without saying, no matter what we do-
Well, we have forty, we have a forty-eight million dollar facilities project, and we have a six to eight million dollar stadium. That is over. That's over that forty-eight million, forty-nine million.
Why is it over?
We have to have a special meeting, and, and this board needs to work through what's gonna fit in that forty-nine million.
And you got a two point six million dollar budget deficit that you gotta figure out, what are we gonna cut out of the budget to be able to afford those projects while, while we raise taxes to the index?
We have a project. Everything there is different projects. We have to choose what projects we're gonna do.
Correct, and we haven't done that.
Why haven't we?
Because you have a forty, you have a forty-eight to forty-nine million dollar facilities project-
Yes.
-that was presented to you and to the public.
Yes.
And you also have an eight million dollar stadium project.
Yes.
Forty-eight plus eight is more than forty-eight.
Why is forty-eight plus eight? I thought forty-eight out of, I thought eight out of forty-eight.
The eight million dollar stadium proposal is not included in the forty-eight million dollar facilities presentation.
Well, it might not be in the facilitation, but the money's there, that we can use it for what we want in that forty-eight million. There's no specifics that says this has to be done for this or done for that.
Which is, which is the reason I'm asking, if you do this, what over here you're willing to not do.
If you're gonna do an eight million dollar stadium, you have to decide in that forty-eight million dollar facilities, what eight million dollars you're cutting.
Yes.
And we haven't done that yet.
Hold on, hold on. We just, we just did a junior high project, right? We took that money out of that forty-nine million, correct? So, we have so much money left out of that. That ten million, that leaves thirty-nine?
And you also have projects at the high school, and the elementary schools, and the intermediate school, that are involved in that facility.
Then are you saying, don't do the stadium all?
No, I'm saying that you have a forty-eight to forty-nine million dollar facilities project.
Yes.
And you have an eight million dollar stadium project.
Yes.
But we can only borrow forty-eight million.
Okay.
So, you need to cut eight million somewhere.
Two, two of that million is already in fund balance, so it's down to six.
Okay.
All right, so we're down to six, Vic. So-
Well, I'm just gonna point out that we had forty-nine million dollars to borrow, but the actual, I, I think the proposed projects were well over that, given the-
Correct.
Yes.
So, so based on what I was looking at, we were at like fifty-five million dollars worth of proposed projects that just really needed to be done. We just, we just committed fourteen million dollars, ten million of our own, four million dollars from these ESAR funds. So, that's pretty cool. We get four million dollars bonus. But we're still, based on these rough calculations, three and a half million dollars in the hole on these projects that need to be done, and that does not include a stadium.
So, it comes down to, either we do the stadium or we don't. Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is it needs to be prioritized with other things, and I want there to be an updated athletic facility, absolutely. But I haven't seen a proposal yet that we can afford. Three and a half years ago, the board approved one that we thought we could afford, and then quickly decided that wasn't gonna work, that wasn't good enough. And since then, I haven't seen one that we can afford.
So, the plans that we just gave you and showed on the board was not sufficient for you? That K and W presented was not sufficient?
Well, yeah, I mean-
Well, he's not saying it's not sufficient for him. He's saying how you're gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
Either comes down, the amount of, what K pays for the stadium is gonna be there, period. No matter what, that's how much it costs. So, we have to make a choice. Are we gonna pay the stadium, build the stadium, or not? It don't-
Well, I, we're in a cer, we're in a circle now.
You're just gonna build the eight million dollar stadium.
Yes.
But you need to fit that into the bond.
I understand.
That means you need to cut facility projects that are in that proposal.
Well, let, let me offer this. In, in my mind, we, we either need to be able to completely get our head around all of the facility needs, including athletics, in order to prioritize them all, which honestly, in my mind, we couldn't do before. And so, because we, we couldn't, didn't have the time, it didn't allow the time to, to do that before, what we did is we said, if we could only do two things, get the concept, if we could only do things, two things, and never anything else, what would the very first two things we would do be? And, and what we said is that that would be the middle school work. That's a, that's a, that's an addition to the cafeteria at the middle school, and that's six classrooms at the middle school, which, oh, by the way, we have no plan on how we're gonna put the teachers in them yet, okay? That's still another little problem. But because we said those are the first two things we, we wanted to do, we would do regardless of anything else, okay, let's pull them out, call them phase one, and go do it. So, in my mind, we got two choices. We can either get our hands around the whole thing, or we can decide what are the next two or three things, in order, in, in order of priority. And, and then the way I would, the way I would try to make progress on that is opposed to the whole board. It might be, it might be more efficient if, if we took the athletic committee, and, which, which we've already called for, and the facilities committee, and put them together to, to, to try to work on this, and consider all the factors, and come back, and, and makes, and make some recommendations to the whole board about, about a phase two.
Mark, can we not vote on this now? Can, and change our, change, if situations change, can we not change with the situation? If we find out we can't afford this stadium, can we not cancel that?
So, you can, but then what's the point?
Time. Time is the point. We're-
But if you're, if you're gonna make a motion that may very well be, be changed later, then what, what was the point of the original motion?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Can you tell me it's gonna be changed later or not? Nobody knows.
No, what I can tell you is we have forty-eight to forty-nine, and maybe it's even more than that, of facilities upgrades, and that presentation did not include the stadium. So, you gotta throw another eight million on. So, let's just pretend it's fifty, and the stadium's eight. You've now got fifty-eight million dollars of projects, and you can only borrow forty-nine.
Okay.
Well, number one-
So, what, so what are you cutting?
Number one, I think, number one, I think you'd look, I, I think, I think we'd look like we made a hasty decision, and that was premature. And, and, and number two, I don't, you know, I'm not sure it's a great negotiation strategy, you know, to, to decide tonight, no thank you, and, and to the other folks over here, no, no thank you. And then, but, but we're gonna turn right back around and negotiate with them on, on the use between... See, we don't have a stadium. We're gonna negotiate with them on the use between now and then, and then figure out if we can afford it over here, which, and, and there's one more problem. The, the problem is even worse than, than what we've got on the table, and I'm afraid, because of this. And I couldn't get my head around all the projects. It's too big for the amount of time that, that we've had to work on it. But I, I did look closely, you know, the, just like, just like every other school in the total plan, it has a level one, level two, level three, level four, my terms. Forty-five million, sixty million, eighty million, a hundred and nine million dollars, okay? When I looked at the middle school, and I looked at the plan that we're doing, I looked at what's past that. What are we not doing? And I get to stuff like the bandroom. Now, now here's the, and go over there and take a look. Go over there and stand in the bandroom. Now, here's, here's- Now here, here's, here's what I'm struggling with a little bit. Is it, is it horrible? No, it's not horrible. Is it okay? Well, it might be okay. But here's the question. See, when we do this, this is the, this addresses what they call the twenty-year needs. It's a twenty-five year bond. It'll take us twen, so what we need to try to imagine when we stand in the, the band room at the middle school and, and the other things that are on the middle school list that we're not doing, how am I gonna feel twenty-five years from now? Now, let's be clear, twenty-five years from now, I probably won't be here. We, we're talking about what my granddaughter's, you know, kids are, are gonna, gonna be playing in, in the band, in the middle, what's it, is it, because when we do this, and this is part of your answer, Fred, from before, when we do this, we're largely locked out because it takes us so long to pay it off, we're largely locked out of anything else for about twenty-five years. Now, there is some retirement of debt coming, you know, slightly in the future, so it's not a hundred percent. But, but see, we just retired this debt. The only reason we're in this position is because, is because we recently retired the debt and are now able to re-borrow money, you know, at the, at a level debt service and do all this stuff. The, the, the people that were sitting here just a few years ago, it's not that they were, it's not that they were asleep at the switch, they, they didn't have the money. And guess what? By the time we get finished, we're gonna find out we don't have as much money as we think we do either.
Christie, can I ask you a question? As we pay this bond down, can, let's say in five years, we paid on it for five years, can we ref, can we get the money we paid from that five years? Or we can ne, if we go from now to then, forty-nine, we can never use that bond, we can never touch that bond again?
Well, the answer to that is you could refinance it if interest rates were the same or going down, but they're not going down, they're, they're headed up.
Well, then why are we wasting time? We're wasting time as the bond, as you're saying, as interest rates go on. And I think Mr. Jackson said eight hundred thousand dollars, but we have no, that's why my biggest kick is.
Well, what we ought to be hurrying toward is developing a plan.
I'm tired of hearing about plans that never materialize. I'm just tired of, so. Mark, you're saying you don't wanna, you're saying now not the time to vote for it?
I'm not, I, I don't tell any member what they're voting for and what they're not.
I'm not saying you are.
I, I'm just saying that, I, I think that the board needs to have, now that we have stadium proposals and we have the facilities proposal that the engineering firm provided us, I think the board needs to figure out what it's fitting in the total bond that it can borrow. Because if you, if we're gonna vote right now and we're gonna fund an eight million dollar stadium, then you need to decide what you're taking out. Are, are you not gonna do anything to the elementary schools? Are you not gonna do anything to the high school?
Will, will, will the, will the stadium break the bond?
Yes, the, the bond's already, you, Fred, the, the lowest number I think was fifty-five million that they presented us, but we can only borrow forty-nine.
That's if we did everything in the fifty-nine, right? If we did everything in the fifty-nine million, that would break, go to fifty-nine. So we can ta, we can go to fifty-one and still build a stadium.
Which creates a two point six million dollar budget deficit in the next year, so you gotta figure out which teachers or whatever it is you're gonna cut out to be able to do that.
For two years, I've heard about the budget deficit. And are we broke now, Lindy? Or is the school district broke from the last budget?
I, I, listen, I've never worried about initial deficits.
Me neither.
Because initial deficits are never what they're, what it really is.
I'm hearing about the three million dollar budget deficit.
My, my point of the math is if you have K and W Engineering or whoever they are telling us that we have fifty-five million dollars in projects, that fifty-five million dollars they're telling us we have in projects does not include the stadium.
I agree.
So now you have sixty-three million.
Okay.
But you can only borrow forty-nine.
Okay.
So you gotta decide what you're cutting.
Oh, oh, all right, so you want us to go through and start cutting now, then for the football, for the stadium?
You don't have a choice.
Okay, I, I'm, then that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. You want us to cut now to get to the stadium?
You have to have an overall plan of what you're gonna spend in that bond. Right now, between what the lowest amount is that they told us that we could do, fifty-five million, and an eight million dollar stadium, we're about ten million dollars over what we can borrow.
Okay.
So if, if you wanna do a stadium-
And that's for the low-ball plan.
Yes, if you're gonna do a stadium, then you're probably gonna eliminate upgrades at the elementary schools or the high school or something, you have to.
I agree.
You can't borrow all that.
I agree, no matter what we did, without stadium, we gotta do that.
Fred, I, I keep saying, like, I wanna build a stadium, it's just not a six million dollar one. So frankly, I am a little disappointed with what we got back from K and W because, I don't know, four months ago or whatever, when they pitched their proposal and that they were gonna come and they were gonna do these community meetings and stuff and, and, and my understanding about what we were going to get out of that process did not materialize. So either I misunderstood or they didn't quite deliver. But I, I had sticker shock when I saw those proposals on the table and I, I know that there's room to change. Like, we, I mean, that may be a starting place, but we've got to get this down to a reasonable figure and then put it in context. Like, so maybe three million is a reasonable figure, but we don't have a blueprint. We don't have like something saying like, hey, you can, you can meet your facility's needs for three million. So I can't even consider that, right? So we've got, we've gotta have something that's reasonable on the table before, you know, I'm willing to, to sort of take action.
Under the premise, we will never have nothing reasonable, 'cause you don't wanna spend the money towards, so.
What, I, I just told you I did. I do wanna spend that money on sports.
They're saying eight million dollars, it's gonna cost to build the thing, even with the two million dollars set aside now, so six, we'll say six, because two million's already set in fund bounds for this track and this stadium now. So that leaves us six. Our job is to find out whether we're gonna, six million dollars for the stadium or we're gonna cut six million dollars out of the plant, or keep six million dollar worth of stuff in the plant.
I mean, if you're committed to a six million dollar stadium, then I guess that is the job, but I'm not committed to a six million dollar stadium. I'm, I'm thinking that we can meet our needs for something considerably less than that.
It looked like eight million dollars to me when it first started out down the park.
And again, I think that, I, I think this is why the board needs to have a special meeting on just facilities and have it soon, because we only have so much to borrow and the board needs to figure out what it's, what's gonna be in that borrowing.
And if we do all this and we got plenty of grass out here, then we don't, we don't need to worry about land and I'm, and I'm wrong. And we, we figure out we got plenty of money, then, then we don't need to, we don't need to worry about them and we don't need to worry about them and, 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 and I'm wrong. But what I really, what I really do wonder is if we did all the work and we, and, and we, we got, we got over there to the door and it was locked and we couldn't get out it and we went over here and we got to this door and we, and it was locked, but there's a window open over there. I, I, I think we might be smart enough to crawl out of it.
I thi, I think if we had a special meeting and we had, you know, because let's face it, I mean, a lot of us don't remember exactly everything that was in that facility's presentation. We, we need a meeting where that's up there, where the stadium's up there, and then we need to start whittling down to what we can fit in the bond, 'cause right now, we already have to whittle down the facilities because it's already over what we can borrow. And if we wanna throw a stadium in there, we have to whittle it down even further. Is everybody okay with a special meeting coming soon?
Yeah.
You don't, you don't want the facilities and the athletics committees to work together to try this? Well, I only say that because, you know, we, we, we did find that we could do certain things, including negotiations in a little more, in, in a, in a more expedient way with a, with a group, a smaller group.
I do, but I think that there needs to be a special board meeting soon with the board open to the public, so the public can see the stadium proposals beside the facility proposals and the board can wrap its head around it and give the committees direction.
That's fine.
I, I just think we have to do that.
Can we get, can we get the loc, are we gonna go, we're not, I guess, can we get at least the committee, I mean, a vote tonight on where its location is? Can we do that? And then, then, then if you wanna change or whatever, you can do it, but I would like at least the location done tonight.
So you, you wanna, you wanna tell them we're walking away?
Yes.
And, and then you wanna go over there and negotiate for a stadium 'cause we don't have one?
No, I don't, I'm walking away and I'm not gonna really negotiate. There's no advantage for me.
Well, where are you gonna, where are you gonna play?
Where are you gonna play next year?
What, if, why is that, why, why is that an issue? I mean, I, I don't understand.
Because we have to enter a lease with them. What if they don't wanna lease it to us?
Then we play away games till we get our stadium built. Other schools do it. They do it all the time when they're gonna do a construction. You play away games till your stadium's built. And the borough can't, I don't think the borough, what the borough gonna say, no, you can't, they're gonna tell their board member, I mean, residents, their kids can't use the stadium till we get the other one built? I tell you, I'm never, 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 never voting for the park. So leave no doubt in nobody's mind where I stand. You wanna move on, go ahead.
Dr. Sappo, why don't you work on getting the special board meeting scheduled to go over the facilities and the stadium? And I would have the engineering company here.
Was there, I'm just going back, was there a motion?
There was no motion at this point. Anything else on athletics for tonight? Middle school project update. Sorry to make you wait so long.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll make it as quick as possible here, but I've been in contact at, at a lot of meetings with Site Logics and I just wanted to give you guys an update of what else going on so far with the middle school project. We have the boundary and topo survey almost complete, that's for the middle school and high school areas. All the PA one calls have been completed, utilities have been located and marked. And again, this is going to be for the permitting and stormwater plans for both the middle school and the high school projects. The EI has been in to do internal inspections and survey work at the middle school. They started that last month before the holidays. There's two different sets of windows that we're gonna have to look at and you guys, the board, have to make a decision on about which way we wanna go, but we'll have more information on those types of windows. There's a possibility a group of windows were put in in nineteen ninety-seven, which we could maybe just replace some window claims. We're gonna do some infrared survey on those to see, you know, how their seals are and what kind of condition those windows are in. And, and those windows are all from the nineteen ninety-seven edition and the storefront of the middle school. I just need to get scheduled, EI needs to come back when there's no students in place. I reached out to try to get a date for that, I have not heard back from them. Our next dates would, I'm hoping like February sixteen or twenty-first, that's when we have some, an off day and a day where no kids are in school. We also, they also need to get up to look at some of our age, air hammer units and duct units, ductwork. They also wanna check out our firewall, which is gonna help see if we need to sprinkle some of these new additions. We have a meeting, the date is not set yet with Donna Somerville, she's a co-ordinator for the borough. That's gonna be Site Logics and, and myself with Donna to see, you know, what we need as far as sprinkler. Hopefully we don't need any at all, we might need part portion of, we might need all of, so, you know, that's a decision we'll have to, she'll have to make for us. And also, so coming up in the next month, Site Logic has requested for us to put them on the agenda, once a month for each board meeting to come in and do like a five-minute update, kinda similar to what I'm doing now. So they have requested that. I think we set the goal as February fourteenth, I think is the next board meeting possibly, to do that, so. And, you know, between now and kinda what I'm giving to you guys now, we'll try to do our best to keep you guys updated. And they are, we did just get a set of drawings in for the proposed mechanical room in the middle school, which is including the new boiler system and new pumps and everything down there. So that's basically the update as of now. You see the marks and the flags out on the sidewalks, that's our topo and utility locations, so you can see there is very big progress going on. Any questions?
Just, just one question or comment. As, as we move forward in the, in the next meeting or with, with, with Site Logic or whatever, I, I think it could be very helpful for us as, as we wrestle with all this other stuff, to, to understand the items that were in the, the different levels of feasibility study for the middle school that we're leaving untouched. Show us what those things are and, and help us wrestle with the fact that we're gonna be locked out of addressing those items 'cause we're gonna be paying for this thing for the next twenty-five years. Show me the, the stuff we're not doing at the middle school, the band room and the whatever, and help me figure out if we're gonna, if we're gonna be comfortable with that thing looking just like it looks all the way between now and the year twenty forty-eight. Okay, so there's number one. And, and I think that, that's important to me. And, and then, then number two, the minute you get any, any clarity on this sprinkler issue, I'd, I'd really love, we'd all love to hear about it. The minute you get any direction on that at all, the reason is 'cause it's two million bucks and we really need, we really need that two million bucks to, to, to stretch out and do some of the other things that need to be done. Thank you.
Yeah, as soon as, I, I'll push to get that date set sooner rather than later and yeah, for sure, and I hear about it and I'll, I'll definitely let you guys know.
Thank you, Chad. Six D contingency savings agreement with CG, CCG Premium Recovery Group. If you have any questions regarding that, please get them to the administration, will appear on the next agenda. Six E agreement between Franklin and Marshall College and Schippenberg Area School District. Any questions right now on that? Six F is your spring substitute incentive, your eight full-day substitute teacher incentive If any board member has any questions on any of these items, please get them to the administration so they can get you answers for the next board meeting.
Just a quick note for board members, the substitute incentive program is similar to what we hit down last year. This would be both of these items, which includes the one-time full-day substitute incentive.
Move, move to citizen comments, there's only one.
Good evening. Darren Donovan, one oh eight McCullough Road. Trying to keep this short, notes getting late. I did add a little bit to my comment due to some of the comments that were made here, so if I do go over a little bit of my time, I apologize. Regarding the athletic stadium and facilities project, can we take a look at this from a long-term perspective? Have, have we ever considered building a new high school at a new location altogether? Would that allow us to potentially borrow more money at a longer term? You could then convert the current high school into a middle school, which would provide the additional space needed there. That current middle school could serve as an elementary school. If we're going to borrow money, let's make sure it pays for itself in the long term. I feel like this would take care of multiple issues all at once and solve long-term problems that will arise in the future, especially with the probability of a steady increase in population in the area. Mr. Burke noted how we are already tight on space here at the high school, so is it wise to expand somewhere that space is already tight? What's that gonna look like in twenty years? Well, my kids' kids are going here, what, you know, it's, what's that gonna be like then? I believe all athletic facilities need to be on school property and they need to be owned by the district. Another alternative to that would be, why do we all always need to do A, B, C, and D right now? Like, could we just take, as a community, could we come together and decide what is the biggest priority and focus on that? Get that taken care of, move to the next item, instead of borrowing a large amount of money all at once? Another issue I want to talk about is the CDC is still recommending masks, not mandating them. So why are we still wearing masks? At this point, who are we trying to protect? The unvaccinated? No, because they have a choice and they have chosen not to get the vaccine. The vaccinated boosted people? No, they have much, as much immunity as you can get from the virus, so they should all be fine. What about the kids who have naturally boosted immune- What about the kids who have naturally boosted immune systems already? I can see wearing a mask in a hospital or a doctor's office, that makes sense because that's where you go for sick. Our schools, however, are not hospitals. Our schools are full of young, healthy children that want to breathe the air freely and get a good education and create relationships with their fellow students without being hampered by a piece of cloth over their face. I would like to suggest that the health and safety plan be on the discussion agenda at every meeting moving forward so that the board can make a quick, quick adjustments as needed as things change with this virus. We're, when are we going to stop quarantining over a virus that now has over a 99% survival rate? How about the ESSER funds that the state has received? How's this district going to use those funds and make sure virtual learning is a thing of the past? Also, I have another concern related to the, to this issue from a member of our community that was unable to attend tonight. Why is it that students enrolled in Grace Beelores have to abide by separate rules regarding mask and vaccination, vaccination status? I'll touch on the issue again that there are bright young men and women who are wanting to become teachers after graduating from Shippensburg University, but they are unable to do sit-ins at Grace Beelores because they are not vaccinated against COVID-19. Also, the children there still need to wear masks even once other schools in our district will not. Are those students not as important as the other children in our district? I would like further explanation on this matter and so would the people of this community. And I didn't know if the gentleman here would like to speak on that while he's here. I think that would be a good thing, but that's all I have to say. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, okay. Okay.
Please, to read this out here in your hand, but this is about the handling of the incident at the middle school in January 11. At approximately 9:10 a.m., I received a text message from my grandson. And this is the text message. "I love you, we're in lockdown, staying in classrooms. Teachers didn't say anything about a drill. I said, 'It's okay, buddy.' And I said, 'Dear Lord, please be with Aiden, keep him safe. I love you too.'" And that was really all I knew. So I just thought to myself, well, boy, I'm sitting at the high school, you know, doing my work and I'm like, wow, what's going on over there? Of course, in my mind, I'm thinking, well, I should, you know, maybe go getting, but of course, I thought better of that. But he suffers from severe anxiety and depression and I was worried about him. So at about 9:50, he sent me a message and said, "Okay, it's over now. It's over. Teachers never got an email about what was happening." And I said, "Okay, buddy, thanks for letting me know. Glad everyone is safe." So again, you know, I, I found out about that through my grandson, who again, did not feel safe. And I know through, obviously through social media, that that situation probably wasn't handled in the best of ways. But I guess, I just want you to think about the children in this district who do suffer from anxiety and severe anxiety. So for 40 minutes, my grandson sat there. Do you think he did any work that day? No. And how, and how do you think his grandparents and parents felt when you get a text message saying, "I love you, we're on lockdown, staying in the classroom. Teachers didn't say anything about a drill"? I just hope that you as board members would think about maybe looking into this matter and seeing why, why it was handled the way it was. And I understand, we don't wanna make a harm to people, but sometimes if you just tell kids the truth, that, that makes a big difference. Hey, and another, another thing, this is about the G Blues thing. The G Blue kids were told on December 21st that after Christmas, beginning on January 13th, that they would be able to go mask-free, just like the rest of the district. Then on January 11, they received an email, I'm sorry, a letter basically saying, "Good afternoon, I hope everyone is staying warm and healthy. As Dean of College of Education and Human Services, I am deeply proud of our school and the way in which we are focused on the growth and development of the whole child while providing exploratory education. G Blues is a unique partnership between Shippensburg University and the Shippensburg Area School District that is unparalleled across Pennsylvania. Because G Blues is located on the university campus, we will be abiding by the campus masking policy. This decision, this decision was approved by the Shippensburg Area School District Board on January 10th, 2022, and is consistent with our university guidelines to ensure the health and well-being of our entire Shippensburg community. Following mask requirements based on COVID-19 positivity rate data and university protocols to maintain wellness." And then it just goes on to say that Shippensburg University mask usage policy effective G Blues effective 1/13/2020, or 2022. So I just, I know there was some questioning about when all of that came, came to, but 'cause I have some brain chunks over there, I just wanted to let you know that that is when that letter went out.
All right, thank you, Teresa. All right. What's that?
Barbara Dickey, I put my name on the list out there.
Oh, you didn't indicate that you wanted to speak?
Board members, it's a pleasure. When I started teaching at Fox Chapel, my name is Barbara Dickey. I live at 32 Lantern Lane. And after buying a fixer-upper, I understand facility costs, I really do. But I started my teaching at Fox Chapel in 1969. I have 53 years of education and 17 of social work. Across the state, I've been asked to do any kind of exemptions, listen to students, do all kinds of things. But I have never seen so much sadness. I've never seen so much anxiety as I've seen since we've asked students to wear masks. One of the things that challenges you, and I have not been wearing a mask. I've been exposed and I don't seem to be able to get anything. But I, I encourage you to take a look, since our courts rule one way, and that as educators, to recognize that sometimes the CDC seems to go too far and doesn't always act in the best interest with a virus of .000, 47 hundredths of a micro, and we have a high rate of recovery among our students. When Allison Bean was asked how many students across the state had died, she said 14. I do know that there was a young man in Titusville who blew his head off 'cause he'd had it with the schools. I know that there was a 10-year-old in Ohio who hung himself. I am much more concerned about the mental health of our students than I am the virus. And I like what Amanda said. I'm a social worker, I am out here living in your community, and I ask you, what have we done to apologize to students for some of the injustices? And what are we doing to do bring me the over? Maybe many of us in the community would be willing to help. One of the things that I did in, in New Orleans, I was part of the Katrina piece, where we moved into the hospital for 16 days and served a broken city. One of the things that I would do, we'd go into a classroom and, and help teachers work with difficult students. I'm sure that there's a lot of us out there that might be willing to assist in anything that you would wanna do. I offer my services to the school district as a veteran in the field. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to board. Come on up, Chris, you're not on the list, but.
It's still out on the table.
Oh, it's still out on the table, okay.
Thank you, Mark and board. Thank you all for your great discussions tonight. Working hard to move things forward, it's much appreciated. I wanted to talk just about a couple things that have come up different months, but mostly this month in sort of roundabout ways. One is, notice tonight on the agenda, there were quite a few minutes from prior board meetings being approved all at once. Last month, sorry, last month. And it's just come to my attention that the district is very slow in getting those minutes brought forward and approved and also publishing them on the website. And those are supposed to be public and available. One, for instance, meeting on November 22nd, I understand that was right before Thanksgiving, was not approved until December 20th, almost a full 30 days later, even though there was another meeting December 6th, when those should have and could have been approved. And it would just be great if we made it a real priority to get that information published and approved in a more timely manner. One other question, and I've asked this, but I'm not sure I got a clear answer. So much is put into these agendas and, and put out a Friday before, and that's really, really helpful. But I've noticed the superintendent's report is not put in writing the Friday before the meeting. And it appears that there are times even the board members haven't seen that report or those recommendations prior to sitting in this room. And so I respectfully request that those be provided ahead of time as well so that they can be reviewed prior to the meeting itself taking place and those discussions. On a Roberts Rule of Order side of things, might have helped clear up the motion from before in the minutes. Motions are supposed to be read twice out loud by the acting chairperson, voted, and then the exact wording put into the minutes. And so that's Roberts Rule, that's pretty basic and would help clear up those things going forward. My main topic today is discrimination. We've had discrimination for a while now that the president, Mark, has brought forward very well in saying, "Why are we discriminated against unvaccinated and in some cases, unmasked children?" When we know COVID is spreading to both of those classes of people. When we pick and choose when we follow CDC and when we follow Department of Health, when we follow State of Pennsylvania, or when we come up with our own arbitrary numbers for things, then that discrimination is our doing and it's intentional. And so it's not something we can hide behind the CDC nor the state. And a question maybe some of you know, Mark, you might know. Do the surety bonds provided to school board members actually cover acts of willful and intentional discrimination? I don't think they do, and I'm looking into that, but maybe you know, or maybe that's something you should look into. There's discrimination mentioned several times tonight against the students at Grace Beelores. And that's clear discrimination against some students against others. And lastly, do you know why in our district right now, if you are out of school for a non-COVID-related sickness or non-COVID-related quarantine, you do not get at-home instruction? But if you are out of school for COVID or COVID quarantine, you do get at-home instruction or work to do. That, to me, is clear discrimination. Is that just a way to hold up our numbers and get the numbers higher? Is it a way to hold hostage education for those children who might be sick with something non-COVID-related? Where does that policy come from? Who decided on that? Mr. Suppo, this is happening under your administration. Why is this happening? Why is this discrimination allowed to continue? This is wrong. Our board president's charge says that all students are treated equally. And that is not happening in our school district at this time in several cases. And it should be the standard we search for, and we're falling short. Our kids deserve better than this. We need to fix this immediately. We're putting our school district at risk, financial and otherwise, by allowing these things to happen. And who's deciding these things unilaterally? Who's implementing these things? That's what we need to know. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Board of comments, Mr. Hopinger? Mr. Kressler?
Yeah, just one thing. Last week, I, I didn't say it, but Christie, thanks for the presentation at the board and finance, or the budget and finance committee. I appreciated that. Just wanted to put note, one thing that really stood out to me about that was the amount of kids that we have lost to cyber charter schools since the beginning of COVID. It looks like it's gone from 80 to over 180, which is somewhere around $1.7 million it's costing us. So I just wanna know, as, as a, I guess, Dr. Suppo, what can we do to get these kids back? Because as we talked about numbers and finances, what we can and can't afford, I think that's, that would be awesome if we could get kids back into our schools, if we're in-person learning. So I just would maybe, if, I don't know if you can answer my question or not, just what, why did those kids leave? What policies made them leave? Whatever it is, I'm sure there's a plethora of different reasons, but I'm just interested in why they left and how we can get them back. Thank you.
Mr. Bard?
None tonight.
Dr. Goats?
Yeah, just one comment. So here I am, sort of looking at the last printout that we got when we did our, our facilities meeting, our feasibility study. And, I mean, this is awesome, and there is a ton of detailed information, but it strikes me that part of the difficulty in us sort of making a decision about where to go forward is it's just, it's just too much. It's like too hard for me to, to sort of conceptualize. So I, I don't, my recommendation, if we're gonna have a special meeting, and Chad maybe, I, I don't know, I don't wanna push work on you. Your boss can let you know if you want this. But I'm kind of visualizing like, like a little Lego plate, and we've got a bunch of Lego bricks of different size, and we're trying to fit them all on that plate. And right now, we've got like too many, right? When I look at this, I'm seeing like, you know, a thousand-piece Lego set. And, and what I really wanna see is like a 20-piece Lego set, right? So if we can, if we can kind of lump some of these so that they're in digestible categories, so that I can look to see like, oh, these are all the projects that we need to do, and, and, and here's the money that we have, then, then I think that will really aid in our decision-making process as, as we're trying to shuffle these and figure out what we can do and what we can't do. So that's, that's my request slash suggestion. Thank you.
Mr. Scott?
Do you have any idea when you wanna have this meeting?
I do not. I will leave that in Dr. Suppo's hands.
Can we have it before the next meeting? Before the next board meeting?
I would assume. He'll send an email out. Can you send one out tomorrow with some dates?
Okay, and that, oh, Mr. Kressler, can I see you and Ms.? Everly, yes. Doc wants to have a safety meeting on the 8th, so we can discuss if it's feasible for you then.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, that's all I have.
If you could just email me, I think there were two dates I sent.
7th and 8th?
Yeah.
I, that's what I'm gonna talk to them about, what, what's good. And you, we can talk to you all three.
Just let me know and then we can, we'll, we'll have to have a conversation.
And Mr. Kressler, you say 8th is good enough for you?
Yeah, it's good.
What about you, Ms. Everly? It's good for me, what about the 8th? 7th is, 8th is good. Okay, we'll make it for the 8th then. That's all I have.
Steph?
Oh, sorry. Late. So I had the opportunity to do a tour with Lauren Zima today, and we went through all of the buildings, trying to just, she was just kind of showing me the different continuums of care throughout the building. And we've got a lot of amazing staff working. I'm very impressed, got to watch some of their lessons. And Lauren, like, I love her vision. Like, our special education's definitely doing some great things, and I am definitely looking forward, you know, to some of the changes coming, you know, proposed. And it had, it actually really helped me being in the building, seeing, you know, with the special education budget being so large to kind of identify that and to see the students and, you know, the level of care that they do need in the classrooms. That's it. Two, what, an update on the audio, it was really making a whole lot of noise tonight. When are we looking, what's that looking time for?
Unfortunately, not good. We've had that on, on order for quite a while, but it is on back order because medicines are not. It's one of those ideas that. are now, it's one of those items that's just hard, hard to get. I, I don't want to say they've ever received anything, but it's, my understanding is the whole package has not been received. It probably would not be until, was it April? Dr. Stevens?
They were hoping in line.
Okay. I, like you, cannot wait.
Mr. Burke?
I have no additional comments tonight.
Mr. Siders?
I'm good.
I'm good. Motion to adjourn?
Fred's going to make a motion, adjourn.
Second? Is that you, Fred?